The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at 7:04. And if the Secretary will please call roll.
Kendra Barberina is here, Donna Stabolski.
Here.
Jim Harb.
Here.
John Idzel.
Here.
Bob Dorshavet.
Here.
Keith Postel.
Here.
Bill Pratt.
Here.
Thank you. And then we have the approval of this evening's agenda. And we have one applicant that wishes to be removed from the agenda this evening. And that's application 2332-0419, the Bolesky Funeral Home. Other than that change is our motion for approval of the amended agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as amended.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the amended agenda, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And is there a motion for approval of our regular meeting of March 20?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as amended.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the minutes of our regular meeting, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And a motion to approve the minutes of our special meeting of March 28.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as amended.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the special meeting minutes, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to the commission on a non-agenda item, something that is not on the agenda? Moving on to public hearings, application 2328-0219, the Class A non-conforming designation. And Ms. Howell, your report.
Thank you, Commissioners. Jennifer Neal is going to present the review of the Class A non-conforming designation.
Thank you and good evening, Commissioners. Application 2328 is brought forth by the Gouci Family Revocable Trust. Vincent Gouci, representative for the family, is present this evening. The Gouci family is requesting Class A non-conforming designation consideration to allow an existing accessory structure without a principal permitted use. The subject property is just shy of five acres, located on Powell Road, as you can see on the screen. It is west of North Ridge Road and east of Fellows Hill Drive, and is zoned R1E, one family residential district. We have reviewed the following principles when considering evaluating a Class A non-conforming designation, and we have the following comments. The applicant is proposing to split the 4.93 acre site into three parcels. The first parcel will be located at the eastern end of the site. It will be vacant. The second and the middle parcel will include the existing primary structure and the first accessory structure or garage for the site. And then the third parcel will be at the west end and will include the second accessory structure, which would not have the principal permitted use. This is the subject site for the property in which we are considering the Class A non-conforming. Prior to a lot split that can happen, the planning commission would need to allow the Class A non-conforming designation. Therefore, the application is before you. The Class A non-conforming designation would maintain the existing accessory structure without the principal permitted use until a primary structure may be built on the site. This is a future proposed addition to the site. No changes are proposed to the existing accessory structure, but upon construction of a new permitted primary structure, the structure would need to comply with the accessory buildings in residential districts review listed on page two of this review. We have gone through each of these criteria and find that the primary structure and accessory structure could meet all requirements when it is proposed and built. Additionally, a review of the master plan and the future land use plan were connected. Per the township's future land use map, the subject site and surrounding areas are designated as residential low density, which is intended for single-family residential uses. No use changes proposed for the site is it will be maintained as a single-family use, which meets the intent of the master plan as it is. Also, the proposed size of the lots after the lot split will be maintained within the residential district, which is one acre. These lots are proposed to be just over one acre, which also complies. With this recommendation, we feel that pending any comments from the planning commission or any comments from the public regarding this application, we do recommend approval of the Class A non-conforming designation for the subject site. If there are any questions from the commission, we'd be happy to take those. Thank you.
Thank you. And the applicants received a communication from the fire department, and they're finding no deficiency in the proposal. And does the applicant have anything to add? Good. All right. Well, with that, we'll open the public hearing at 7:10. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this application? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing at 7:11. Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Refresh my memory now. We do the non-conforming, we approve the non-conforming use. And then what's the process again for the lot split? How does that work again?
The process for any land division or combination or lot line modification is administrative here in the township. And the applicant, before you have submitted such application, we can't finalize that land division until a Class A designation would be granted because it would create a non-conforming lot.
Is there any reason you wouldn't grant it if this were approved?
As presented, the proposed three lots, three parcels, would exceed the zoning, the minimum dimensional standards of the zoning ordinance. So there's no concern.
Would the adjacent homeowners be notified with the lot split? No? Okay.
And that's typical of land divisions and combinations.
Any other questions?
I assume the outbuilding there is to house all the equipment to keep the place looking nice.
It's big, I'll tell you that. What you have to do is drive by it, and you can see it from afar. My question is this, if they ever do decide to build on that lot, is that a process that anybody reviews? How does that happen?
For a single-family residential structure, that process would run entirely through the building department.
Yeah, the building department would make sure all the things were dimensionally correct and all that kind of good stuff.
They most definitely would.
I wanted to point out that the application number on the site map is different than the application number on the agenda. I'm not sure which one is correct.
Yeah, I think it should be 0219, not 0218. I think the agenda is correct.
Okay, we'll double check that.
Any other comments, concerns, questions? Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve application 2328-0219 without any conditions or restrictions other than what's in the planner's report.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Postel and supported by Commissioner Harb to approve said application, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Well, good luck to you on the next step. Okay, next under new business, we have application 2330-0319, the Webster Corporation. And the planning report, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. Before we begin, I'd like to just point out that the applicant did provide some revised site plan drawings, which were emailed out, and a letter stating that they would comply with the outstanding items as addressed in the planning and engineering reports. Hard copies of those materials have been provided at your seat this evening. And then the applicant has also supplied some additional renderings, which are located at the very bottom of your packet in front of you. And the applicant will be making a presentation following the reading of the reports with this new information. The application before you is for a tentative and final site plan for approximately 290,000 square foot new build for research technology and light manufacturing that's located at the southeast corner of Hagerty and Schoolcraft Roads on approximately 18.8 acres of vacant land that is heavily wooded. This site is a rather prominent location in the township, and as such, any new construction may require additional landscaping or buffering as required by the planning commission. In terms of the proposed use, office buildings and high-tech industrial uses with the principal function of light manufacturing are principal permitted uses in the TAR, the Technology and Research zoning district, which this is located in. You might think of other similar uses as Polytech or even Addient on Halyard. Those are other TAR districts and operations. The applicant did supply a detailed cover memo regarding the use of the tenant, which is Wabasto. And that detailed its office and light industrial manufacturing operations. In terms of the dimensional requirements of the TAR district, the applicant does, or the site plan, excuse me, does meet all those dimensional standards of Article 20, the Schedule of Regulations. In terms of preservation of the site features, this is a heavily wooded site, although the tree survey that was performed by PEA did reveal that there were a lot of, not quality, trees and species on the site. On the planner's review, page two, you'll see that 290 quality trees are to be removed, and replacement is provided onsite. Additionally, in the southern corner of the site, you'll notice that there's approximately 2.1 acres of trees that are preserved. And then there are also a couple small patches of trees that will be preserved along Hagerty Road as well. There still is a bit of a discrepancy in the payment and lieu, what that ultimate number will be. But the applicant has agreed to provide any trees that will be necessary through the payment or planting in lieu. In the April 15 letter to the township, they stated that they will provide those trees and that they would prefer to plant those at a designated location that the township specifies. Instead of contributing to the payment and lieu fund, they'd rather plant them directly, which would be an additional benefit to the township. And they have agreed to provide an additional 50 trees above and beyond what is required at a minimum for replacement. In terms of number four, which is the impact on public services, the outstanding item was to provide cost estimates. The applicant has provided cost estimates now for both engineering and landscaping, with 280,000 alone currently for landscaping. The site proposes three new access points. Two are to be off of Hagerty Road, one for the office area and the employees, and a second, southern access drive designated for truck traffic. And then utilizing the existing cul-de-sac off of Schoolcraft Road, that would be the third entrance for truck traffic. So there would not be a new curb cut on Schoolcraft Road and just two curb cuts onto Hagerty. The applicant also provided in your packet the truck diagram to show where truck traffic will be coming to for deliveries and to leave with the new product. And we're recommending that as a condition of approval that truck traffic, both during construction and then later for the daily operations, would be prohibited from using Hagerty Road north to alleviate concerns that, you know, I think the planning commission has historically heard regarding other truck traffic going north on Hagerty Road. On page three at the top, there's also a recommendation that the outdoor waste receptacle enclosure would be increased to eight feet in height to reduce the visibility of any receptacles inside. And the applicant has noted that on the site plan, it has been changed to eight feet in height. A five-foot sidewalk is also proposed on both the full extents of Hagerty and Schoolcraft Roads and is in compliance. The fire department report was included. I believe no deficiencies were found as part of their review. In terms of landscaping, they have provided the required number of street trees. And as a recommendation that the parking lot be screened from view along Hagerty Road, they have added over 220 use at three feet in height that would effectively create a continuous evergreen hedge along Hagerty Road. So in addition to the street trees, also providing concealment for the parking. They have also adjusted their site plan, this is their new landscape plan on the screen. And we can zoom in here. They have added in the yellow area, as we recommended, a continuous evergreen screen for that loading area along Schoolcraft for both east and westbound traffic. And they have also added some additional landscaping in the detention area. And the red arrow there is pointing to the continuous evergreen screen along Hagerty Road for the parking lot. So in terms of the outstanding items that we've listed in the planning report, they have provided the cost estimate. They have substituted the spruce and elm species as recommended. They have provided the screening along both Hagerty and Schoolcraft. They have modified the plan so that all lawn and planting areas will be irrigated. They have added detention basin landscaping. And the last condition or recommendation was regarding parking lot landscaping. I believe that this is either very close or finalized, that just might need a little tweaking. So in terms of landscaping, they have largely addressed any of the ordinance concerns that were brought up. In terms of parking, the zoning ordinance of Article 24 does require that 586 spaces would be provided onsite. The applicant is proposing 342 spaces for their operations, which is lesser than what the ordinance requires. Per 2462, the planning commission may approve a lesser number of parking spaces, provided that the applicant provides justification by demonstrating the need for the lesser number of spaces based on their operations, and that they can show a future banked parking area on the site plan, which is currently on the screen before you, that approximately two-acre area could accommodate an additional 190 parking spaces if needed in the future. If such a future time this would be needed, then those existing trees would have to be replaced either onsite or elsewhere. And the applicant did provide a bit more information about this, that by not constructing the parking that they feel is unnecessary for their operations, they are saving 328 trees in this area. With the banked parking, they would have a total of 603 spaces, which exceeds the total number of spaces they would need based on their square footage, which is 586 spaces. So the planning commission is still charged with making a determination that the parking spaces that are proposed are sufficient, but the applicant has demonstrated that they have the available space to accommodate those banked spaces in the future. In terms of the building design and architecture, the applicant has made some significant changes to the building since the original elevations you received in your packets. The building is to be made completely of precast concrete materials and glass and utilizing different shades of gray to create visual interest. You can see that is the main entrance there along Hagerty, completely a glass entryway. We have seen this more modern take on architecture and the precast panels. For instance, Polytech or Lacan, they followed a similar design. There is a representative from Kirkstra Precast Concrete here this evening to discuss the building material and the durability of those materials in more detail and to answer any questions. The applicant, I believe, also has some building material to share with the commission samples. If you'll note that on the building elevations, another change is that the windows have been expanded and that there are skylights proposed in each bay for enjoyment of the employees, but also for energy efficiency. A waiver by the commission is required because Section 2814 of the zoning ordinance does require that all buildings, whether they be commercial, industrial, provide at least 75% of the building facade for masonry products. So such waivers have been granted in the past for other industrial buildings, and the applicant is requesting the same. And we'll provide some additional information on their justification. Lastly, in terms of the exterior lighting, the applicant, as recommended, has reduced the height of the light poles from 25 feet to 18 feet. They have also reduced the total lighting onsite by four light fixtures. And the building mounting fixtures will only be eight feet in height, which will create more of a pedestrian feel, except for the truck wells, those will be at 16 feet in height. And we're still requesting that a note be added to the site plan so that all non-essential security lighting would be set on a timer for non-operational hours. So based on the revised drawings and provided that consensus is reached among the planning commissioners on the facade waiver and for the banked parking, the following three conditions are recommended. The first is that truck traffic, both during construction and for daily operations, be restricted to not utilize Hagerty northbound for freeway access. That replacement and payment or planting in lieu must be finalized with the township, including any additional landscape requirements. And that all non-security lighting be set on a timer for standard hours of operation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And again, the applicant is here to present their project.
Okay, thank you. And the engineer report, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. We've reviewed the above referenced plan set dated March 19, 2019, and received in our office on April 3, 2019. Our comments are fairly straightforward, they'll be easily addressed. I don't see any comments that are going to cause us any issues down the road, we just need more detail on a few items. So with that, we recommend approval of the tentative site plan, conditioned upon all of our comments being addressed to the satisfaction of the planning commission. Final engineering approval is a condition of final site plan approval. And due to the number and nature of comments, we do not recommend engineering approval at this time. However, we would have no objections to the planning commission granting final site plan approval contingent upon receiving engineering approval, securing all permits, and engineering escrows and inspection fees paid.
Okay, thank you. And the applicants received communication from the fire department indicating no deficiencies were found from a public safety perspective. And the applicant is here, and she has a presentation.
It's over there. No, no, you can stand there, but the microphone is portable. You just need to turn it on. It's not on.
You can tap it and see if it picks up. There you go.
Good evening. I'm Dave Harden with Hillside Investments. We are the developer and owner of this project. We're here tonight seeking tentative and final site plan approval for a very exciting project for a new state-of-the-art facility for a large Tier One automotive supplier, Wabasto Roof Systems. The facility, as mentioned, will be approximately 290,000 square feet on a 18.8 acre site. One thing I want to mention before I get too far into the details is that this is an entirely new program for Wabasto. And as such, they will be hiring 441 new employees for this facility, not transferring from other locations, brand-new employees, that's 441 brand-new jobs. They also have another facility in Plymouth Township, which will remain as-is. This facility will have nothing to do with that, so they won't be closing one operation for a new one.
I can just interrupt you for a minute. I just want to turn to the secretary. We've got a couple of communications that we want to make note of and in the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did receive two correspondence, one from Warren C. Evans, Wayne County Executive, in favor of this project, and then also from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, who is also in favor of the project.
Just wanted to make sure to get that.
Thank you. Some of the statistics about the building, it is primarily a light assembly use, but also has some minor warehouse and office uses. As mentioned, it's 290,000 square feet in total, approximately 10,000 square feet of office, 70,000 square feet of warehouse space, and 210,000 square feet of light assembly. One unique feature to this building is the fact that we have 112 six-foot by six-foot skylights throughout the building. That's two per interior bay, as well as every other precast panel has a four-foot by eight-foot window at the exterior. We did a photometric study of just the skylights and how well it would light up the interior of the building. And it's quite remarkable that I think it probably handles approximately 50% of their light requirement, obviously on a good sunny day. And that's not including all the exterior windows as well, so this will be a very well-lit facility on the interior. The majority of the building is 38 feet in height, but the main entry feature goes up to approximately 42 feet. The colors of the building are four of Wabasto's corporate design standard colors, and I have a little sample here of some paint swatches. So it ranges from a white to two darker So it ranges from a white to two darker grays to a slate gray color, which we have used for our accent band. As Laura had mentioned, our plan for the tree replacement, when we submitted the plan, we initially were able to fit all the replacement trees onsite. However, in addressing some of the comments that we received, we had to swap some trees out, and we are now left with a delta of 106 replacement trees that will not make their way back onto the site, which would go along with the proposed planting in lieu option. And then, as Laura had mentioned also, we would like to also contribute an extra 50 trees to that fund, bringing the total to about 156 trees that we are happy to plant somewhere on township property. Just another thing to point out is the traffic plan. As we developed the site and in our talkings with Wabasto, we wanted to make sure that we did not negatively impact any of the surrounding residential areas with truck traffic. And ironically, it worked out best as the fastest way to enter and exit the site for the highways for their trucks. And I think that exhibit has been included in your packet. One of the reasons, well, there's several reasons we're going with a precast building here, the main one of which would be the timing for this project. The timing that Wabasto needs to start delivering product for this new program that they signed up for is very tight, and one of the very few, if probably only, building methods and materials to do that is precast concrete panels. The other, one of the big reasons is that Wabasto, being a German company, has a very strict set of standards in what they like to see for the exterior of their buildings. They like very crisp, clean, white and grays. They do a lot with concrete and also metal panels, so it's, I'd say it's their corporate standard to use that type of material. And also, kind of going back to the skylights and their concern for quality of life of their employees, the precast panels have a very high insulative value, more so than most other exterior wall systems, which I'll let Zach from Kirkstra Precasts is here to kind of give you guys an overview of Kirkstra's products and some of the details on their systems.
Thank you. So, precast concrete has been around for quite a long time, since the 50s is when it started being developed, where traditional building materials like masonry have historically just been around a lot longer. Precast concrete is relatively new, though it has been around for quite some time at this point. So, that precast concrete provides is that you have minimal joints in a building, those minimal joints is minimal areas for damage due to settling of foundations and just through building usage. It's very durable. Panels like the project you see here, as David already mentioned, are crisp, clean, and inherently resistant to many of the adverse effects of weather. I have a sample here that's nice and heavy, but this is a standard finishes. This piece itself is unpainted, and so as you can imagine with the paint, similar to what you see on the screen there on this here, highly durable, very strong, that we certify that our building should last a minimum of 50 years if maintained, and the main only place you have to maintain is the caulk joints, which will be 12-foot on center. So I have the sample available, if anyone would like to see it.
As Zach said, for ease of transportation, that's not what the full profile of the panel looks like. It's a 10-inch panel, it's three inches of concrete, four inches of insulation, and then three inches of concrete again on the other side. So, I'd say the sample's smaller, because that would be a huge sample to carry around.
So, how big is the panel that it comes in?
So, one panel for this project is, what was the height of the building? It'll be 38-foot tall, 12-foot wide, and 10 inches thick. That thickness, as you can see represented here, would be three inches of concrete at the exterior, four inches of insulation in the middle, and then three more inches of concrete on the interior. This is a slightly different cross-section, it's just a picture for reference. One of the advantages that gives you is it's hard-sided both inside and out, and then the insulation runs edge-to-edge throughout the incomplete profile of the building.
And it's fairly resistant to moisture penetration from the outside?
Yes. Three inches of concrete will provide a vapor and air barrier per the Michigan Residential Code, and you get two layers of that, one on the inside and one on the outside.
And how long will that paint last on the exterior?
If it's installed properly, some paint installers will give you 25 years for that, but that'd be a better question for the paint suppliers.
And one thing to note on that, too, is we recently toured Kirkstra's plant in Grand Rapids, and it was brought to our attention that they have a proprietary paint spec that they use to work best on these concrete surfaces, so that they don't have any peeling or any of those problems.
Is the location in Grand Rapids, is it similar to what you're proposing to build here?
Well, the location in Grand Rapids is just their plant where they manufacture the panels, so they build all of these panels in an interior, for lack of a better term, a factory.
So, is there a building close by that we can look at that's got these panels?
How are the panels, is there interlocking channels that hold them together, 12-foot panels?
So, these panels will, as you can see, kind of in this picture here, they're all sitting on a foundation, and at this point in the stage of construction, the steel for the roof, the columns and beams for the roofing structure are not in place. As you can see in the tops of the panels there, there's two pockets in this one. This one had a different style of connection than we'll be using, but the joists and the beams for the roofing system will attach directly to the wall panels, and so they'll span from the foundation all the way to the roof height. Side to side, there's only connections to provide alignment for the installation crew to make sure that the panels come together so that the wall is nice and straight.
So they're like giant Legos?
That's how I often describe it. Any other questions?
Okay, great. Thank you.
With that, I'm gonna hand it over to Jim Butler with PEA to go through some of the site-specific details on the civil engineering side.
Good evening, Jim Butler with PEA. I think Laura and Dave did a pretty good job related to the site, features of the site. One thing I do want to bring to your attention is the stormwater management. This project site was a part of a 31-acre development that was built many, many years ago. There's a detention basin located along the railroad tracks. That basin was sized for a 10-year storm event. The county standard now is 100-year. So what we're doing is offsetting that volume, that we have volume in that basin that we're using for our site, plus we're going to add another basin to the site to bring it in full compliance with Wayne County standards. Also, with that basin, we'll have two water quality units to pretreat all stormwater that goes into that. Ultimately, this basin will discharge into, you can see that long rectangle, that's the existing stormwater basin. Our basin will discharge in that basin, that basin will go up into a pump system that goes coincidentally up into Schoolcraft Road, believe it or not. So, we will be in full compliance with Wayne County's current stormwater standards.
Another item I want to address from earlier in the presentation was the justification for the lesser amount of parking spaces. In discussing this project with Wabasto, their need and their number of employees that they will have onsite at any one time, plus any crossover they have in shift changes, 342 parking spaces is more than enough to cover that. They have some very large equipment in this space that takes up a lot more space than you would think for, you know, however many people you could imagine working in a 290,000 square foot building. There's a lot of large pieces of equipment in this space, so they just don't need the number of employees that you would otherwise. And in addition to that area at the south end of the site, there's also, to get to that 600 number, I just want to point out that in that area, at the corner of Hagerty and Schoolcraft, where it's currently a large green belt in front of the single row of parking, there's an additional row of parking that would run down there to get to that 606 parking spaces.
I was going to ask that question, because I added 342 and 190, and didn't get to 600.
Sure, yeah.
That's the accountant in me, I'm afraid. Just mentioning the employees, how many shifts are they gonna run?
It's my understanding that there are two shifts, two 10-hour shifts, five days a week, sometimes six days when things are busy.
When things are really popping, right?
Do you know what time those shifts are?
I don't know. 5:00 AM to midnight or 1:00.
Any other questions at this point? So, maybe more?
Thank you.
I do have one question on the landscaping plan. So, and I saw the revised plan, it's kind of hard to read, but I did look at the one that was submitted with our original packet, and I'm not a landscaper by any stretch of the imagination, and I'm glad to see you're taking out the spruce trees, because there are some issues with that. But also, I noticed that you have a few eastern white pines, and I understand they're also susceptible to diseases and air pollution, so if you're having a lot of trucks, so you may want to talk to your landscape person to verify the vitality of the eastern white pine and perhaps if he determines or she determines it's not appropriate for the site, then you might want to substitute.
Okay.
Is it appropriate at this point, speaking of truck traffic, how many deliveries do you believe you're gonna have every day?
How many deliveries?
Goes and coming and goings, I guess.
That's a better question, maybe Bob or Edis.
Bob or Ted or Carol or Alice? Oh, that's an old reference.
Yeah, I don't know that they have, they don't have an exact number yet.
Well, I'm not expecting an exact number, I'm just trying to get an idea of what kind of traffic we're actually gonna see. And I think it's extremely important for the folks in the township, in the residential areas north of you, that whoever is in charge of this, which apparently are those gentlemen behind you, that indeed, that northbound and southbound Hagerty Road north of Schoolcraft are off limits, because that's, I can tell you, the only way you're gonna get to the freeway that way is go all the way up to Six Mile, and that Six Mile Hagerty intersection during most of the day is an absolute disaster. It doesn't bode well for big trucks to be in that area. Whereas if you go west on, or I'm sorry, east on Schoolcraft and either go south on Echols to Ann Arbor Road and then access 275, or go like you're suggesting down Schoolcraft and make the U and come back on, you're much better off. That's just my assessment of the situation.
Yeah, I think that's how we plan for trucks to exit.
I'm just reinforcing, I know I saw the drawing, so I'm just making sure they understand that's what the township would like to see happen.
Right, sure.
I have a question about your cul-de-sac. Do you own it, or on your site map or application, it looks like it's outside of the boundaries?
It's a site condominium with Master Automatic to the east, so there's an association set up that grants the site full access to the cul-de-sac.
Wonderful. So that turnaround is for the two of you?
Correct.
Right, Master Craft and yourself?
Yep.
I want to compliment you, not only on the completeness of your application, but the very professional way you answered every concern in writing ahead of time and took care of that. That's often not the case with people that come here, so.
Thank you.
I think we're all excited about them coming to our township and bringing the jobs and adding to the, really, the quality of life here, too, so we do appreciate that, and I would echo Keat's comments, too, about the professionalism and the completeness of the plans are really stellar.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
The planner referenced that it was a heavily treat site, and it was a heavily treat site. A lot of the trees are now gone. I'd like to see the reserve area for parking, so if at some later date you need additional parking, what would be the process in terms of the trees on that site, Laura?
The applicant would follow an administrative process unless otherwise defined by the planning commission, and any trees that were to be removed during that phase would have to be replaced, similar to the process that we're following now.
Okay, so with the process and your offer to plant trees elsewhere, will you warrant those trees in some way? I mean, in other areas, the city of Novi, for example, if there are trees being planted in another area in lieu of, they withhold money as bond for those trees to make a portion, say 25% of whatever the value of those trees are, is held in bond to make sure that two years later, the trees are still alive. So if you plant the trees, are you gonna warrant the trees somehow?
Well, we'll certainly follow whatever the requirement of the township is, and I know standard with any landscape supplier, they do offer warranties. I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but they do offer warranties on the trees that they do supply, which would also hold true for this.
I know there have been a lot of people that have been disappointed with the tree removal, so we need to set some sort of standard for trees.
With regard to the parking, I often feel very comfortable when you have a freestanding site like this, not something that's gonna be leased out to someone else and is adjacent to a lot of other facilities, that the people doing the design work really know how many parking places they're gonna need, because if they had their employees, there's no place else for them to go, really. So, I mean, I give a lot of credibility to your estimates of what you need. In terms of the tree planting, if you plant trees elsewhere in lieu of, obviously where you plant them, somebody has some responsibility to water them and take care of them, not you, but the initial tree certainly should be warranted for health.
So, Laura, further to that idea or thought process that's been vouchsafed by these folks about planting trees elsewhere, who controls that from the township's perspective and decides where the trees are gonna go and all that kind of good stuff?
Well, this would be a first for the township in recent years.
I understand that, yeah. That's the reason I'm asking. Has there been any thought process to how that's going to happen?
I believe it would be handled by the supervisor's office and the board of trustees, who would make the ultimate decision. And, you know, as this account was created for the public benefit, putting those trees in a public space like Township Park would be an appropriate use.
Just long as they don't put them in the middle of the fairway on hills. Anyway.
It's in the middle of the fairway, I won't get it.
Well, that's true of me as well.
I have a question in your application. It talks about a blue accent ribbon that goes around the building. Where would that fit in and what color blue is it?
So, that has since been changed to, I think it's graphite gray, which is the darkest color here and there. It's one of, over time, blue used to be a Wabasto standard color. It is now not, and has been replaced by this graphite gray, so that has since been changed to this color.
Good. I like your 112 skylights. I think that's a great, great idea. Oh, my favorite subject. What's the sign gonna look like?
The applicant has indicated that they would like to have one monument sign for their main entrance off of Hagerty, and then also a wall sign with their corporate logo. Signage will be approved through the building department.
Okay. So, is the sign, the wall sign I'm not concerned about, it's the sign out by the entrance? Is it gonna look something like the building, or what materials are they thinking of?
The signs that we've discussed with Wabasto are, they are, I'll say, more narrow and tall, and they are of a metallic finish, so I don't know, like a metal panel, almost. It's a silverish kind of color.
Not the township standard.
I think Bosch also has that signature.
No, I understand. Only reason I asked the question.
It's just a question.
Any other concerns, questions, comments? Okay, so you're seeking tentative and final for tonight? So, is there such a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve tentative and final site plan on 2330-0319 with the following conditions, that the
Can you put that slide back on where you had that? Because that should be included in your motion.
Okay.
While you're waiting, maybe their official response, response where they listed every item should be part of.
Oh, yeah, it will be, yeah.
There you go. That one, yeah, make sure that's.
Well, let's get this one out of the way first. Provided consensus is re, well, no, we, that the truck traffic, both during construction and daily operations, will be restricted to not use Hagerty northbound or southbound, north of, north of Schoolcraft Road. Replacement and payment in lieu of, planting of lieu will be finalized with the township. And the, including the additional landscaping required as listed in the, in the response by the, by the applicant. All the security lighting should be set on a timer for standard hours of operation. And the, and the lighting is moved to 18 feet from 25 feet. And the building facades are approved as submitted. And the engineering standards, as listed in the engineering report, must be complied with in full. And in addition, the items as listed in the dated, in the response from Hillside Investments, stated April 15th, 2019, are to be complied with as well.
Oh, one clarification on the north and southbound prohibition on Hagerty. Do you need to add anything, because they do need to go on Hagerty to get into the site?
I said north of Schoolcraft Road.
And, and south?
You said north and south.
I said north and southbound, north of Schoolcraft Road.
Yeah, I think you said on Hagerty.
I said, no. I said north and southbound on Hagerty, north of Schoolcraft Road is exactly what I said.
Okay.
Support.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to grant tentative and final site plan. Was it Harb?
Yeah.
Oh, was it Harb? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, okay. Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Harb. Granted tentative and final site plan approval for application 23, 2330-0319, subject to set conditions, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Yeah, welcome to the township.
Welcome to the township.
I have it. I have it. Okay. Okay, moving on to application 2320-1218, the InvoTech Business Park and the planning report.
Thank you, commissioners. Applicant Redico, represented by Gary Roberts, has requested final site plan consideration for the InnoTech Business Park. The business park is proposed for the former Detroit House of Corrections Site, located on Five Mile Road between Ridge Road and Beck Road. Is zoned industrial, and this will be a site condominium where each of the 10 units will be developed later for an office research, research or industrial facility and would, would require planning commission site plan approval at the time of their proposed building for consideration and approval. This application was before you in February of this, of this year, February 20th, and was granted tentative site plan approval as conditioned. I'll hit on some of the notable outstanding items and major changes based on the last report from February. The applicant has provided, I'm sorry, within the number three preservation of site features, the applicant, the applicant has provided the requested open space calculations. Notably, 37 acres will be left as open space, where half an acre will be preserved wetlands, 11.5 acres of preserved flood plain, and 25.18 acres of preserved woodland areas. The, also number five, the outstanding item, the applicant has acknowledged that they will be providing written documentation for the shared access agreement of the drive to be accessing Five Mile Road. And this will cover, this will also address any common open space easements for the township review. This is still an outstanding item, but the applicant will be providing that prior to final engineering review. Additionally, the applicant has agreed to address the need for a sidewalk within the site or payment in lieu options. Moving on to number eight, landscaping, screening and buffering. There were several items that needed to be addressed under this item. And the applicant has provided a revised landscape plan, which you should have been provided a hard copy of this evening. Also, rendering of the landscape plan is shown on the screen. For the landscaping requirements, we requested an extension of the frontage landscaping along Five Mile Road to the west of the site, in front of the detention pond on the west, and further to the edge of the site, in front of the wooded area. We've also requested the landscaping of the, I'm sorry, the detention pond to be increased. The applicant has, has agreed to accommodate both of these requirements and is shown on the landscape plan. As I said earlier, each of the individual site condominiums will be before the planning commission. And at that time, parking and loading, building design and architecture, and exterior lighting of each site will be addressed. With the understanding that the applicant will provide a shared use agreement as well as the sidewalk accommodations, we feel the applicant has complied with all of the outstanding requirements and recommend final set plan approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Also, Gary Roberts, the project representative, is available this evening to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the engineering report?
Thank you, commissioners. We have reviewed the final site plan for the reference project prepared by PEA dated March 11th, 2019, and received in our office March 29th, 2019, for conformance with the Plymouth Township engineering standards. Our comments are, there's, there's no comments that I see are, raise any issues. We just need more details, filing for permits and that kind of thing. So, with that, final engineering approval is a condition of the final site plan approval. We do not recommend final engineering approval at this time. However, we have no issues with, with a final site plan approval, contingent upon receiving engineering approval, all permits received, and engineering escrow fees deposited with the township. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And the applicants receive the communication from the fire department. They have no deficiencies from a public safety perspective. And is the applicant here?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Gary Roberts for Redico. Also with me tonight is Tim McCafferty, who is the vice president of Redico, and of course Jim Butler, our consulting engineer. Just, just briefly, this is substantially the same plan that you, from a planning perspective, that you reviewed for tentative. The only difference, the only real difference is from a planning perspective is these islands were elongated a little bit to accomplish a little more prominence of the entry. We decided to do that. And of course, we were cordially required to provide landscaping that extended beyond the site here, which, which wasn't shown on the last plan. But basically, the concept is exactly the same thing that we reviewed at the last time. So, if there is any question, we're, Mr. McCafferty and I are happy to take them.
Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Your main entrance, it looks really tight, and can you bring big rigs in?
I'm sorry?
Can you negotiate the big rigs coming in, tractor trailers through that?
Oh, sure, yes. They'll all be to an industrial standard, as is the cul-de-sac, by the way, where you could turn a semi-truck around entirely, be to an industrial road standard.
Hey, Gary, is there an expectation there'll be a traffic light at the entrance at some point, or?
Not that I know of. Now, all the documents have gone to Wayne County for curb cut permit and whatever. Of course, they have not responded yet. So, those are conditions of permits that is a part of your motion, are part of your reports here. But as we sit here today, I, I actually do not anticipate a traffic light there. This lot four, where we've set it aside for a larger user, that happens to align nicely with the road directly across the street, and that might be a logical space to break traffic there. That's outside of my expectation for that site going forward.
There is, I see earth-moving equipment on the Northville side of Five.
Right.
Do you know what's going in there? And will your driveway, can that align with anything on the north side of Five, or?
Yeah, it, it turns out, yeah, that's, that project is right around this area here. And that's the, that's a 30,000 square foot, two-story office building for a Chinese company called Zhong Ding. That's the first of two buildings planned for the site that they have acquired from Northville Township. It's really good for, for this area. This is the first thing west of the park, and that's really kind of the, the sort of psychological groundbreaker, if you will, to get more activity happening to the west here, finally.
So, do we know what's happening with Five Mile in terms of, the road's getting pretty shaky over there?
Well, yes.
What are the plans moving forward with Five Mile? With all this increase, that's going to be a lot of increased traffic with both sides, plus the dump, the stuff going to the dump, plus, plus, plus.
Agreed. As you know, the, the Northville Township and Plymouth Township have jointly formed the MITC redevelopment authority, which will be a tax capture of all of the taxes of this site and all of Northville's property all the way to Napier, as well as ultimately this Adient site below us and all the properties south of Five, west of Ridge, to, to fund a road, which we're contemplating will, will go in at least two phases. The first phase will go from Beck to Ridge and south on Ridge to Halyard, so that that completes that Class A loop. And as currently planned, Five Mile would become a three-lane road. And the, you may or may not know this, but some, a couple of years ago, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners gave the MITC group, appropriated to the MITC group, $150,000. So, about a third of that engineering has been completed at this point. Now, we need to get the, to kick in the authority and get the approvals through, through all of that. Of course, one of our board members is here, right there, and get that, get that resolved. Excuse me, but that's the grand plan.
Do we need to post a meeting now, or?
We got one to spare.
But that is the grand plan.
What's the timeline on that, do we know?
We don't know exactly. The timeline on, on this project is most likely not going to commence until the late fall. We still have a number of MDEQs, issues to resolve. So, as a very practical matter, we don't really need a road until 2020, late 2020.
I couldn't catch what you said. You mentioned the Adient site, has that property been acquired, or? I didn't quite hear when
Just the road.
Oh, just the road.
No, the Adient, Adient, Johnson Controls originally acquired this piece. Their Adient sits right down here.
Right, right.
But, but there's 100 acres there zoned properly, and I would expect at some point that will develop similarly to the Technology Park.
But it hasn't been acquired yet?
No, well, it's acquired by Adient.
Yeah, but not, not
But not by anybody else, no, 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 sir. It's not really for sale, they're trying to decide how much of it to use themselves.
And then I've, I've heard that the dump contributed some money to the maintenance of Five Mile, is that true?
That's, that's how that operates currently. Because all the truck traffic that comes off of Beck goes to Napier. And as I understand, they spend $100,000 a year patching that road up, which is logical because they're the one that's screwing it up. So, because no one else goes there, basically. And so, that's how it's been maintained heretofore. I'm hoping we can, we can leverage some of that payment into our new road system as well, get it all done.
So, it doesn't release them from that?
Right now, they're not released because there is not a plan to replace it. But eventually, I, I could see them, the board, which I keep speaking for it, he's right behind me, which makes me nervous. The, the board would approach the landfill for contribution to the new road. That makes sense to me.
And then on a more mundane question or issue. So, I looked at the landscape plan, and again, I couldn't read the one that was done today because the print is so tiny. But I did see you had white spruces, so you might want to check with the landscaper again, if that's subject to some of these diseases that have been going around on the white spruce.
Okay.
So, if the landscaper feels that that's true, you might want to consider another.
Yes, we use Jim Allen, which is one of our local landscape architects. But I will certainly inquire about that one. Honestly, not my expertise.
Right, right.
The latest and greatest.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I will inquire about white spruce.
Anything else from anybody? Are we ready for a motion?
I have some. It might be a bit premature, but do you have a sense of interest as far as potential clients?
You know, we are talking to some people about it. The interesting thing about this project is that there are no other lots available, either in Plymouth Township or in Northville Township, in the light industrial or tower districts that are out there north of 14. So, as a result, we're seeing, we're getting inquiries about, it's not so much, gee, here's my project, but when are these going to be available? Because we've got things that we want to bring you. And that's, that's the million-dollar question, when will they be available? We're still working on that. But I think there's no, there's no hesitation on behalf of Redico that this is clearly market right.
Are we set? Anyone else? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve final site plan on 2320-1218 with the conditions as listed as listed in the planner's report, and of course, the conditions as listed in the engineering report.
Move by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to grant final site plan approval for application 23/20-1218, subject to said conditions. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is application 2274-0118, the Beck Road Hotel, PUD Phase One, and the planning report.
Thank you, Chairman Sobolski. This application was last presented at the March 28th special meeting of the Planning Commission, and since this time, there has been an internal meeting with the Township and Chairman Sobolski. And the applicant has submitted revised plans for final review. Briefly, I'll cover a couple of the items that have been addressed since our 28th meeting. The first, and since this report was written, is that the land combination documents have been found acceptable and sufficient to the Township engineer. So what remains is the administrative stamping process of those, but the combination is set to move forward. Additionally, the applicant has made payment with the Township for payment in lieu of, or excuse me, they have made payment for the 44 replacement trees. The, or the initial site plan on sheet SP2 now states regarding the entrance improvements that the Beck Road entrance will be improved, either with a boulevard or other enhancement to best accommodate traffic and safety with Phase Two considerations. The, some additional notes have been added to the elevations regarding the stone window trim, you know, projecting a minimum of four inches in height. And the lighting has now all been addressed for compliance. In terms of outstanding items, as noted on page three, 83 replacement trees, or the landscaping sheet reads that 83 replacement trees will be provided, where 77 is actually the correct number. And on the screen here, you'll see that the applicant also has added the note regarding the seating of the, the seating and rough grading of the Phase Two site to be maintained until such future development. And here is the point that I just brought up about the 83 replacement trees and what will be provided. Item four, which is listed on page three of our report, has to deal with the consideration of increasing the height of some of the replacement trees. As you recall, at the March 28th meeting, we were instructed to receive an independent landscape architect's review of the spacing of the landscape trees, or the replacement trees, along that western property line. And in that independent landscaper view, it was brought up that the proposed spacing, as shown on the plans for the western boundary line, is sufficient. And this is an example that they gave of a project in Northville Township on Seven Mile. These trees here that are shown are spaced the same as the trees that will be on the Beck Road site. The trees in this photograph are 18 feet in height, and they have two staggered rows. So when this example was brought up as a result of the review of the spacing, I wanted to make sure that the Planning Commission had a solid understanding of what they, of what you anticipate to be planted, because these trees are 18 feet in height, whereas the proposed trees, except for four pines, which are proposed at 12 feet in height, all of the trees proposed at the Beck Road site are 10 feet in height. So they will be significant, 40% less than what is shown here at the same spacing. However, on the Beck Road site, there is a third and at some point, fourth staggered row. So the proposed vegetation along the Beck Road western property line will be thicker and denser, but it will not be as high as this. So I just want to make sure that that is the understanding and intent of the Planning Commission for the height of those evergreens. And that would be a recommendation that if the Commission preferred those trees to be higher, that would be a recommendation to the Board of Trustees for their ultimate consideration. On page four, a very minor note that the bark and edging should just be removed from the landscape plan entirely. I think he's trying to denote that it's an existing condition, but it's, it's too much in conflict. So that is extremely minor. And then lastly, regarding the elevations, the proposed metal canopies that the Commission did discuss in length on the east and south elevations above the doorway and above the drive-through, those now have been revised as smaller individual metal curved canopies. And in our review, it's our understanding that these are not quite at the same scale as the former Ruby Tuesdays restaurant. So we want to make sure that the Planning, the Planning Commission's vision for how that, that new build would be compatible with the existing restaurant is on par moving forward. So just as a recommendation, we advise that the canopies on the east elevation should at least span the door frame and the adjacent window panes on either sides. That would be three glass panes, and that the canopy on the south elevation, which is for the drive-through, should be enlarged just to ensure the functionality of the drive-through. We are recommending that any motion for the Board of Trustees' consideration would specifically spell out those items that the Planning Commission wishes to see. Thank you.
So it would be the, the, the trees, the density, the height that you've just gone over, and the arches? And is there anything else?
The other items are just, the bark and edging note will just be removed, and we'll make sure that that's taken care of.
Okay, so that's not an outstanding issue any longer?
Correct.
All right. Do you have anything to add?
I do.
Okay.
So I went out and, dating back of the 28th, and your recommendation, the Board's recommendation, that we come up with a, an arch rather than a wrought iron that extended the entire front of the property, front of the building, that was gonna be a metal canopy, mind you. So we went out and designed, there's not a awning, if you would, that kind of meets a fabricated awning. We'll have to have these fabricated. They're basically 42 inches wide by 32 inches deep. So it's a, it's a sizable piece. Then I went out and measured the canopy on the Ruby Tuesdays, because I wanted to understand what the scale of their canopy was relative to the canopies that we have. And Ruby Tuesday only has one canopy on the side that faces Beck Road, and that building's 189 feet long. That canopy is about 17 feet, all right? So it makes about 8%, 8.8% of that building. Our canopies, I'll call them canopies, we'll call them awnings, but for this discussion, I'll call them canopies. Our canopies make up only over 17%. So we're actually double the scale of our building. You keep in mind, we only have 40 feet of frontage. They've got 189 feet of frontage. So I agree that the canopy we have here is smaller, but in the scale of the linear feet of building that we have here, 40 feet, I think there's still going to make a significant difference, and being made out of some sort of metal corrugated material, which we'll have to have it fabricated. They'll, they'll be very, very well, we think it'll be appropriate accent to the door. You know, we are adding a brick ledge that runs the whole top of the, the top of the building as an accent as well. So, and then when you look at the canopy on the driver's side, we did expand that, because we recognized that window was a little bit bigger. That canopy there is 75 inches by 32. So it is a five, it's almost a six-foot canopy that extends over that drive-through window. We didn't want to get into adding it to the, to the other window, because it might come in conflict with the, with the drive-through window here. And it's only to be, as I see it, is really to be an accent for that wall, and something to complement some of the other buildings that are out there already, specifically the Ruby Tuesdays. Ruby Tuesdays is not made out of metal. It's made out of some coroplast material. Ours will be made out of some sort of fabricated metal. So I think we'll have a better, a better look to it. And certainly with the accents that you've requested, and the, the fine tuning of this site plan of the elevations, I think it's gonna really be a building that makes a significant statement.
Comments on the arches? Let's just look at arches first, and then we'll take the other items.
It just seems to me, Leo, that if you're gonna put an arch on a set of windows or a door, essentially that door is that door plus those windows. The front, now I'm talking about the backside, okay? And what you've got is this little bitty looking thing that covers the door.
It's 42.
It goes over the door.
It's 42 inches, and the door's 36. But it's 42 because, of course, it's, you put an eyebrow in it.
Right, you're putting an eyebrow in it. So, I mean, just from my perspective, that's why those, those canopies look appropriate, because they're, they run across the entire front of, the entire front of the door. This looks like a teardrop that somebody decided to add later, just because the Planning Commission asked them to.
But the, the, the linear feet of canopies on my building are twice the amount on the Ruby Tuesdays. The linear feet.
Just looking at lightning.
Yeah. Is twice the amount.
It must be coming in.
Okay. Of the, of the building. You know, I, I don't mind modifying it. We want to bring it, we have the room to bring it up, because the arch, kind of, it kind of worked pretty good. I thought we were gonna be constricted with this ban up here. We can bring up the canopy higher, but what we'll do is, we won't have as much of an abrupt arch, we'll have it a little bit narrower arch, so I can cover some more windows.
Right, that's, I guess that's, because what you've got now is, it looks like this.
It's an eyebrow.
I think it ought to look like that.
Well, because the Commission had said they wanted an eyebrow, and I kind of, when we start to work with it, remember, we haven't fabricated yet, so we got the flexibility.
That, that's, that's why I'm glad you haven't fabricated yet, because, you know, I'm just saying, for me, that it, it looks like this, and it ought to look like that, like that one does. That, that's, that's my thought process.
A bigger eyebrow.
Yeah.
Well, that covers just the door. That happens to be a double-sized door, too.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying it has to be as big as that, at all. I'm saying, cover the two side lights and the door on the, on the backside, and then cover the entire, because I'm, what I'm thinking about functionality is, it's raining, okay? And I'm coming up to drive through your drive-through, and I got rain coming off of that canopy and onto my head. And that doesn't make any sense to me. All I'm saying is, there's two panes on that drive-through. You know, do the same thing, you know, move your, don't, don't make it so, so arched, and, and bring it out to cover both, both panes on that drive-through, so that when somebody drives underneath it, they're completely underneath it before they open their window.
Well, on this, well, you're referring to the drive-through or the front?
I'm talking about the drive-through.
The drive-through's 75 inches already. It's six feet long. The drive-through's six feet long by 32, only the ones over.
How was?
The door.
How wide is that window? Those, with both panes?
Oh, this covers the whole, it only covers the drive-through window. The other pane's a false, is not a drive-through window.
No, 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 no. I, I'm not talking about the other, the back window. I'm talking about the two panes, because the drawing I saw, it didn't look like, it looked like it covered the one panel.
It does. It only covers the one panel. That's, because the intent is, that's gonna be where the drive-through is, the farthest pane.
Yeah, I think the concern here is that when you drive in, you know, to, you know, pick up your food, you don't want it to be dripping off on your car when you roll down the window to get it, so it should be longer.
Well, why don't we take those mutton bars out of there, okay? So I'm not conflicting with those. See how we got those Mullins at the top? Why don't I take?
I'm looking, what, what drawing?
Drive-through, the drive-through windows. We got two Mullins at the top of each of those.
What page, what pages?
That would be A3.
A3, okay, thank you. Okay, yeah, these are the, this is what I was looking at. And so, so what you're telling me is that this other window?
It's not a drive-through.
It's a fake one.
It's just a window.
It's a fake window?
No, no, it's a window, but it's not a drive-through window.
No, I understand it doesn't open.
It doesn't open. It's not the pneumatic door. We're gonna fit that drive-through window in that last window there. I could do this, because I don't want to be conflicted. Why don't I just add another one of those over the other window? So you have two of them. Unless we take on the mullen bars, and we don't make it as strict of eyebrow, and get it to cover both with one, am I thinking out loud here? Maybe two of those is gonna look odd. Why don't we take those two mullen bars out of those windows?
What are you talking about those?
The Mullins that go up. Mine shows Mullins.
Oh, these two bars that go vertically?
Yeah. Why don't we take those out, we'll start the windows there, and I'll bring the can, I'll bring the canopy all the way across there, but on a modest.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I gotta.
Yeah, not, not, yeah, not, not like this, but like that.
Yeah.
And then do the same thing over here on the front, you know, that, you know, I don't know, whether you want to bring it up or leave it, but this, if you go to the front, that thing looks like it shouldn't be there.
Well, it is, it's 17% of the storefront.
Ah.
I'm telling, it's 17.
Don't talk to me about storefront 17%.
It is.
All I'm saying, visually, from my perspective, and it's just me, that, 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 that thing ought to go across both those side windows and, and the door.
We'll have to bring it up higher in order to clear that.
That's right, yeah.
And then with that also, I want to take those Mullins out of there, just because I think we'll be conflicting with those. See how we got the Mullins? And we'll leave the Mullins and the rest of the windows going across.
Yeah, that would be fine, because you wouldn't see them anyway.
No. Well, you'd be conflicting with the canopy that's in front of it.
So that's, that's just my suggestion. I don't know what anybody else feels like, but that's, that's my suggestion.
Have it assembled to the back of the building the same way, with the, with the tie-in to the built.
I'm sorry?
Have it assembled to the building the same way that we've got the first.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I mean, as long as you.
So that would run all the way to the brick? I'm, when you extend that one on the east elevation.
It would go from the brick through, oh, across the door to the pane on the far side of the door, on the north side of the door.
The door's in the middle and then there's two panes on either side.
Just like that.
I think that is about the same size as the, uh, similar canopy on the end of that Ruby Tuesday.
Uh, that Ruby Tuesday, I measured that off.
Not that one. One in the end.
Wait, show.
Oh, that one there?
Laura will flip it over to the south elevation.
Well, that building is 189 by 60 feet.
I'm saying that, that appears to be roughly what we're talking about, uh, width-wise, isn't it?
Well, that's, that I'm not sure about, but all I'm saying is, is to cover the, the door and the two side lights uh, on the east elevation and the entire window with less of an arch. Because there's that, there's not much of an arch in.
No.
So, so if you take it like that, like you say, and move it out, uh, move it less, less, less arch, you'll get more coverage.
Wouldn't it make more sense to, uh?
Uh, have, like, uh, the Ruby Tuesday where they have flat on either side instead of a continuous arch. Follow the contour of that. You were it straight and then arches up.
No, because that's, that's not out metal. They, they can do that. It's not a coroplast. It's going to be a whole lot harder to do it out of metal.
If you have it fabricated, it's not going to be.
Huh?
It won't be easy when you're fabricating.
No. See, they, they put that in a mold. There's no metal in that, so they could, it looks.
So what is that made out of?
More than, made of coroplast.
Plastic?
Well, it looks like drive-in, if you ask me.
Yeah, okay.
You know, that's why it kind of has the, has the, I mean, it's detailed, but because you can work better with that material than you can with metal.
But, yeah, to me, I think that's, to me, that's more acceptable than what you're showing on the.
I, 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 we could agree to that.
Okay.
We agree to it. It's just going to be a lower, it'll basically be a little bit more modest, uh, um, uh, eyebrow, if you will.
Right.
If I may approach.
Yeah. Well, I think as we told you last, uh, last time you were here, it doesn't have to be duplicate of it, but there's some, uh, it complements what's in the existing building.
And what, what color were you planning on making?
We're going to match it with the, uh, with the telephone pole. Bronze, brown blind, bronze.
All right.
So what here's our envision. We'll take it across here.
Yeah.
Okay?
Right.
We'll keep that, uh, element there. We didn't have that element there. We'll do the same thing with that one.
Okay.
Same width, 32 inches down.
I was going to pass it down.
But now, those will be, uh.
Show John.
Those were 42 inches, so those are going to probably be 65, 70 inches to cover all those windows. We're, we're going to make it out of a light gauge.
Yeah. I like that.
I don't want it falling on anybody's head when they're walking.
Okay. So now perhaps we should center our discussion to center on the trees that Laura showed us, you know, where, he's giving us three and some places four rows of trees, but they're 40% uh, shorter than the ones that she showed us in Northville on seven.
I guess the concern I have is when the hotel goes in, how tall is the hotel?
The hotel's going to be 35, 40 feet.
Right. So, I don't see how this is going to 10-foot trees.
What are people going to be looking at? I mean, before, they would have been looking at trees.
No, before, we would have been taking those out anyways.
Not all those trees, that's why we.
Northwest corner were the, were the good quality of trees, but the due west of that site never had any quality trees. The tree study shows that. Now it had good, for the time being, it had good foliage in the middle, so that blocked the view shed looking west. So in part, you're correct. We had some northwest area that we cleared that is not as appealing. But, you know, we've, we've came, we went up to the 10-foot tree that was requested from us the last time we were here on, and on the landscape plan that was reviewed. We are planting in some cases four, four rows deep. You know, they're going to grow. These, these trees do grow. And, and I'm not so sure that the ones down there on Seven Mile are, were planted at 18 feet. That's a pretty big tree to plant. But they grow their pines, they grow at a pretty good clip. You know, we've got four sets of trees that all start off at 10 feet. They're going to be every bit of 14, 15 feet before we know it. You look at your own pines in your neighborhood. I mean, you, you, you know, you plant a pine and before you know it, it's, it can be 15, 20 feet if it's, if it's, uh, maintained correctly.
Actually, the bigger the tree, the longer it takes to recover from the, from the planting.
The trauma.
Yeah. Because a, a typical tree takes three full seasons.
Yeah.
And, uh, but you don't, if it's too big, particularly a pine, a shorter one will catch up and will grow, will, will catch up to it and pass it.
I seen that firsthand. We transplanted some trees, you know, with the big, uh, 50, 60-inch balls. And, you know, they're susceptible to failure because they just, you know, these will be good trees when we plant them. We're watering them back there, we're irrigating them back there. Unusual to other, that might be planted throughout the municipality that are not irrigated. And, um, you know, and if they, if they go, and, and we've got, at some point, you know, we've got, if you look at the dearth of trees back there, you've got 30 feet that were kind of filling this thing in. You know, it's our goal, you, you're never, we're never going to get these trees long, far, uh, high enough to protect the, the, uh, the view shed, if you would, of the people that are on the third floor or the fourth floor of this hotel. In time, yes, but not now.
So Laura, how much is the payment in lieu? How much does that equate to?
I hadn't seen the actual payment in lieu form. Um, Sherry informed me it was somewhere around, um, excuse me, Sherry and the, um, Paul McCheck in the building department informed me it was somewhere around 15,000.
What are your thoughts about planting trees, uh, like you heard the other applicants elsewhere in the township?
Instead of the payment in lieu of?
As long as they're planted at the same time you're planting the ones.
Right. The township would specify, you know, where to be planted and, you know, what type.
Well, we paid the money. If, if we want to revisit that, I mean, we'll explore it.
You're ready to pay the money?
We paid the money.
You know, I have a, uh, if you bought 44 trees, it was 15 grand. That shows it was about 340 per tree. And I, I buy a good number of trees and that doesn't get you much by way of a, um, a pine planted.
It's the standard that.
Oh, I know it's a standard. We talked.
What, it, it's in your ordinance.
What's that?
It's in the ordinance. And it's a standard that I've used in the past for the $350. You know, I, the, um, so, I mean, we, we put forth the faith, the good faith of paying for the 44 trees because we do, we come put them on site. We all discuss why and we understand that. It's your money. If you want to come back and say, we've paid it already. You want to come back and say, we want you to plant these trees, you know, you guys could just take the money too and plant them where you want as well. If you want to do that and you want us to facilitate that process, we'd be willing to do that. Because you got to tell us, in, in part, you're really involved with it anyways, because you got to tell us where it's going to be. Whether it's going to be the parks or roads and so forth. But let's pick an area that, you know, they're going to really make a significant, um, impact.
I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
Have you considered it, the planning commission? I mean, I'm not, I'm just throwing it out there as an idea.
I kind of think at the end of the day, the, the biggest impact would be on the property, actually the subject property at the west section of it. I mean, there's, I mean, where in the township are we in dire need of trees? I mean, I don't know that, that, that need exists.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Are there other issues that the commission has? So Laura, uh, to state of the plans, do you feel they're in good shape compared to what we've got in the past? That this is ready to go to the board of trustees or does he have to come back with revised plans? What would you like to see?
Aside from the elevations, um, and if the commission is satisfied with the height of the, the 10-foot trees as presented, then this plan has, has checked the requirement boxes. I forgot to mention earlier that they also, for the outdoor patio in front of the new commercial area, they did, um, propose a polished aggregate and that is shown on the, the site plan that will be a bit more decorative in nature and ADA accessible.
So could we, could we request additional trees in lieu of the higher trees? I mean, does that make any sense? Does that, I'm just trying to figure out a way to, to remedy the.
Well, I think we did have, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, uh, Laura, they'd go to another landscaper, you know, to see if, if those trees that were being proposed were appropriate species.
Right.
Where they appropriately spaced, because we don't want to have them so close together that after a few years, they're going to die. And that's where she came up with this, this photograph. So I think to plant more trees is just going to crowd them more in.
So if you go three levels, you're talking about going three tiers out from the west property line?
Three. Some, some sections are four. And we're using best practices, you know? Uh, we had our, I did have my architect, landscape architect write a letter to the planning commission, to the planner, stating that, you know, what's steps that they use. He's, you know, he's a licensed landscape architect. He's.
I understand he has a good reputation.
He does. You know, on the canopies, what I could do is this. We're not building them tomorrow, okay? We just want to get in there, get our site work going. And we'll bring back a detail, we're going to have to show you a cut sheet of it anyways, of what the structure, when it comes, when our construction drawings of the building. So just make the, sure the cut sheet of the spec that we talked about today meets with what we've talked about. I mean, you're going to have to have to review it and, 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 and I, we got to actually get a fabricating company come and says, here's, here's what it's going to look like and here's the thickness and here's the width, part of our construction drawings. I'm not pulling a building permit. I only get a site plan provo. And I hope in the spirit of what we talked about with these awnings that we've, I, I understand what you want. I, of course, I wrote it out there and we'll bring it back that way when we, when we bring our construction drawings in.
So Laura, is your, excuse me, maybe I missed it, but in your report, does, is the issue about the trees that were taken down, how that's going to be graded and how, how the, the ground will be stabilized? Where are we with that?
Um, in terms of the, the larger, uh, empty area for phase two?
Yes.
Yep, the applicant has noted on their site plan that, um, that area will be stabilized and, um, will be, will have a rough grade and the, um, native, um, vegetation.
Native grasses and.
Mm-hmm, the, the wildflower mix.
And the new trees planted, they'll be irrigated?
Correct.
So your planner report says payment in lieu for 44 trees must be secured with the township.
Yeah.
And Leo says he's paid it.
The bill.
Who's right?
The bill, this, this was written last Thursday and the, um, either on Monday or Tuesday, um, I received an email from the building department saying that he had paid.
Let's get out of here.
I just haven't physically seen the form myself, but I have email correspondence.
They, they confirm that that happened.
Yes.
So the submission to the board of trustees will be clean. All right, there's, they don't have to look at it and come, you know, well, they may have their own thoughts because we're just doing a recommendation, but we want to make sure that it's as clean as it, it can be.
Correct. I mean, I would see that, um, the, that there would be a condition of approval for the awnings to be presented back to the planning commission at such time. But other than, than that and the finalization of the land combination.
So what's the status with Home Depot? Is there, is that?
Phase two?
Yeah.
Phase two.
Yeah.
And we'll pursue it. We have pursued it. They've got our information. And the canopies, you know, I don't want to be in a, if, if we could have those done administratively.
Did you do that drawing with Laura?
Um, I did.
So Laura, that, what I'm going to suggest is that, that we're going to recommend this to the board of trustees and of course, they're going to take it up and my understanding is they're going to take it up next week. I think. Is that right?
Depends.
Depends. If, if we, if we get it. Yeah. If we, if we recommend it, um, if it gets recommended. So, um, all we're saying is that, all we're going to say about, now, all I'm thinking about saying is about the, the canopies is that they, um, will be designed as agreed to with the planning commission this evening, which.
That's fine.
Is that.
And I'm going to redo it between now and time and go to the board anyways. Okay? So you'll have a package from the board that they approved.
I have some verbiage that I played around with and you can use this if you want, but it's something that we would recommend approval of this application.
Okay.
Subject to the resolution of the, any outstanding items in the planning and engineering report. And that we recommend the arc, arch canopy over the two doors, cover each door and adjacent two window panes. The arch over the, uh, the arches over the entire drive-up window and sliding window, thus fulfilling the approval of the PUD where the architecture of the building complements the existing building on site. So they know that this isn't just something we thought of, that it is, this, there's a reason behind it. Right.
And then that will be, um, all the other outstanding items.
That, right, 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 right. So you can use this part if you want to, but.
So what about Home Depot again on phase two? You, you started to answer and.
No, it's phase two and we're pursuing it. You know, we're going to have to compel, uh, Home Depot.
How do you do that exactly?
I don't know. You know, we, nobody asked them for an access agreement years ago when they did their site plan, so. I'm thi, I'm hoping that through the fire marshal and that it's for emergency access, they're going to come to you for something at some point.
I thought you'd already gone to Home Depot multiple times then.
We have. Yeah. They have been saying yes. And we don't have a right to force them to say yes. We got to ask them, compel them, tell them it's for safety purposes. But, and I suspect they're going to be in here for, for some, some approvals at some point in the future. I think they'll agree. There you go.
I think you just go back to them and you tell them that you have two rooms reserved for Home Depot.
I'm sorry?
You just go back to them and say you have two rooms that are dedicated to Home Depot and every time they have representatives come in town, they can stay at those two rooms and you have access.
Yeah. Trust me, nobody that's got a, that's got that high pay grade is staying, is coming here because this is just a retail store. They don't even have a regional. They don't even have regional offices here really anymore. But, you know, it's not like they've been, they've never, they haven't said no, they just haven't said yes yet. Okay?
That's a no. Let's just say they're not thrilled with the idea.
No.
I think there was a movie once called Definitely Maybe.
Yeah.
Definitely Maybe? I like that.
It's been about a year?
Uh, we dropped the access. We fought the access for almost six months. Unfettered access with cars. And they finally said, we're not going to give you that. Because we don't want you conflicted with the, the trucks that are unloading and loading there. And we said, well, then let's convert, and our latest plans, of course, the plans that you have there shows and we've give those to them, our latest plans show, um, a access for only fire trucks. Don't they come in for a, a seasonal permit to do outside, uh?
They will, very sure.
Well, I don't think they come in every year now. I think we set that up. We did it on a one-year basis and they didn't follow up exactly the way we had asked them to do it. And so they came back the second year and we told them what needed to be changed and they did it. Uh, I've watched it and they've been. I've watched it, and they've been pretty good the last year or two. They followed the plan.
And Leo, we can't, we can't go back to them and just say, we're not going to give this to you unless you give an access to.
No, but...
It's a nice thought. It's a nice thought. That's not, it's not copistatic.
So many things that are wrong with that. You can't even...
Well, they're going to come in here, you know.
I think we'll compel, you know, the, with the level that it's at right now in the attorney's office, I suspect if they didn't want to at least come around to saying yes, they wouldn't be spending the resources of the people there so far.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? Well, are we ready?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of application 2274-0118 to the Board of Trustees, subject to the resolution of all outstanding items in the April 11th, 2019, planning report, and the March 21st, 2019, engineering report, with further recommended that, and it is further recommended, that the canopy over the two doors cover each doorway and the adjacent window panes, and the arch cover the entire drive-up window and sliding window, thus fulfilling the approved PUD where architecture of the building complements the existing building on-site.
All in favor, or is there support?
Do we need to say anything about the 10-foot trees?
Well, it's in your report.
Well, it doesn't, it says make...
Yeah, it didn't resolve.
Okay, you can say the 10...
So it's unresolved.
Okay.
So, so as far as the trees go, we approve the 10-foot tree installation in three or four staggered rows.
Anything else from anyone? Okay, is there support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Postel to recommend approval for application 2274-0118, subject to said conditions, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Only took us 10 reports.
Now, now, you know what's interesting, Leo? Okay, so looking at when you applied, so June, eight, June of 2017, you applied for, or you talked about the lot split. So there's been all these senses, sense of urgency with all this stuff, and yet here we are, took two years to get, so you didn't even apply, it took you a year to apply for the lot split. I just don't understand where, you know, it's, why it takes so long to at least apply when you're, you're emulating this sense of urgency with us all the time. So just, just a point of observation, okay?
So noted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is the planning and zoning monthly reports, and the various communications that we've received from you, Laura, so maybe you just want to go over some of that?
Yes, thank you. So there's a couple of different memorandums provided in this miscellaneous section. The first has to do with the update to the Salem Township master plan. Our department, the community development department, did not receive the notice of intent to plan by Salem Township. It's possible that they sent it to a different department, but we have not seen it, and I did email them that first week in April to find out what their timeline and process for adoption was. I have not heard back from, from their township at all. The link to the plan was provided, because since we are an adjacent community on our western boundary, if there's any comments, it is, it is a, an option for the township to convey those thoughts and recommendations of the planning commission or the board to the township to make sure that future development, especially with the future land use map, is compatible with the build-out and future of our community. So if there's anything that the commission would like the community development department to relay, I know the supervisor's office has mentioned traffic, drainage, development patterns in that area. We're happy to incorporate those comments and then provide them.
I think the traffic, I mean, that's been a big issue that would happen. I don't know about the drainage, years ago when we were doing the development near our boundary on, off of North Territorial, I can't remember the name of that subdivision. On North Territorial, right at Napier.
At Napier and over Lakes.
And over Lakes. You know, the Salem people came, and they were concerned about drainage from that development coming over into theirs. So anything that they're going to do, we'd be concerned about the drainage as well.
Have a tip for that, right?
Yeah, right.
We'll just keep raising.
Well, the dump, they have the dump. They have the truck car.
Yeah, be like the landfill.
Can we say truck car? I don't know.
Yeah, don't.
It's clear they really want to remain agricultural. I did read through the, through their draft, and they're pretty strong about remaining agricultural.
Well, both Salem and Superior Township have always been agricultural, not pro development.
Yeah, I mean, that's why people move out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Horse farms and...
Yeah, they like it rural, but at some point, there's only so much they could do.
Well, if there's any additional thoughts, please feel free to email our department in the next week or so, and then we'll prepare that transmittal. And then the second memorandum immediately following that has to do with the Gateways of Plymouth. This is just for informational purpose, but because it was just heard at the zoning Board of Appeals meeting on April 7th, I wanted to make sure that the commission was abreast of it. It is something that we will see at a future meeting. As you recall, the condo development there on Northville Road, Gateways of Plymouth, they, one of the buildings, Building 7, which backs up to M14, requested a setback variance of 15 feet, and it was approved last, or that first week in April. They will be required to come back before the commission, just to make sure that as a result of that setback and a couple of changes to their parking, that the landscaping is all satisfactory to the commission. So we should be reviewing that in either May or June.
And the zoning Board of Appeals motion was conditioned on planning commission approval.
And then your monthly report, you've given that to us. That is from you?
Oh, just wanted to share as well that at the Board of Trustees meeting on April 9th, they did approve the fence ordinance.
Saw that. Good.
You'll be out of work.
It's all right with me. Talk to the rest of the zoning board, they're happy to take it.
Yeah. Anything else, Laura?
I think that's it, unless there are any questions.
Questions for Laura, or any comments from the commission?
Yeah, I have a comment, and I have something I'd like to share. Okay, so I've only been on the commission a couple of years, but I note that we've had issues recently, a lot of issues with trees and tree removal. I took the time to communicate with both the Woodlands, the acting forestry asset manager with the City of Novi, and the, the City of Novi's landscape architect, who are both very involved with, with trees in, in Novi, and retaining trees, maintaining trees, and replacing trees. This is some information that I put together, and I'd like to share it with the commission. I've given Mr. Pratt and Commissioner Dorshovitz a copy, as well as the chair, and I think that we still have at least four or five notable sites in the township that are heavily treed. And I hate to see what happened to some of our sites happen to those sites. Miller Woods is one in question. I don't know what the fate would, of Miller Woods would be. I don't know what the fate of the eight acres that was donated to the township that's adjacent to McQuarrie Park, if at some reas, some later date, the township decides to sell property. I just don't want to see all of our trees disappear. I think it's, it's doing an injustice to the people that we are representing, and when we have people that remove trees where they say they're going to leave them, and then, it's just not a good policy. So with that being said, when you look at this form, and you see what their payment in lieu of is, is much more restrictive, substantial, yes. So with Ned, right now, he would have had to put up probably two or three times as much money, given the circumference of some of the trees he removed. So that puts him on notice. They're less likely to remove trees if they're subject to a larger fine. And, and one of the big problems that the City of Novi related to me was, it's an administrative nightmare, payment in lieu, and not to mention that somebody has to maintain these trees, and that's why I brought that up earlier today, because they even withhold 25% of the bond money for two years to make sure that the trees didn't die. They got to make sure that the trees are around, they paid for these trees. Now, this is something that's supposed to be a lasting asset for the community, and if they don't, if they don't survive, then we have nothing left, so.
So when they get that money, do they plant a tree right away?
They do an inspection, they do an inspection prior to the development of the site, they identify the trees, then they come back when the site is being developed, they see what has taken place, and they come back after the site has been developed to see, did they leave the 50? He used an example, which I use in this sheet, of 100 trees, 50 were supposed to stay, and 50 were being removed. So they had to put the money for the 50 they were removing, payment in lieu, and that money was maintained until they came back and said, okay, the 50 had been removed, now where did you plant them? And did they plant them, or does the City of Novi plant them? And they give them, there are options there with them. So...
Is this part of their ordinance?
This is part of their ordinance.
Is that a separate?
And the ordinance is actually, I think I cited the ordinance, it's section, it's under Section 37 of their municipal code, and it is available online.
Okay.
And it's worth reading.
Yeah, that's, that's the reason I was asking, is what, where to, where to find it.
The commission has discussed this in the past, prior to my, my being part of it, and I, I think we're at the end of the road. And, and there should be some sort of civil infraction, I think, for people that, when we approve a site plan, that says they're supposed to maintain so many trees, leave them, and they just say, screw you, and we're going to take them out, they, there's got to be a price to pay for that besides paying for the trees.
There should be, yeah.
There has to be some, some sort of repercussion, so.
Yeah, there has to be a deterrent, otherwise people are just going to keep doing it.
Should you just say, we just paid? I mean, he paid 350 a tree, is that what he paid?
Or 340.
340, yeah. So the minimum here on this is 400 for a tree eight to 11 inches. You either plant a tree, or you give them $400.
You know, that doesn't come close to...
If it's 11 to 20 inches, it's $800, you know, so...
A 10-foot black mountain spruce?
Yeah.
Planted's 1,200 bucks.
Yeah, yeah, so that's the problem. Yeah, so anyways, that's my two cents.
Any other comments?
So you're, you're thinking we should eventually work up a suggestion?
I, I think that we should, that the township should adopt some sort of a Woodlands ordinance. I, I rewind when I was a active realtor, and, and I sold a parcel, 40-acre parcel in Novi, Timber Ridge subdivision, been in the same family since 1850. And Trammell Crowe had just come in and put in the town center and leveled that corner, so Novi scrambled, after our purchase agreement was signed, they scrambled to adopt a Woodlands ordinance, and they just copied West Bloomfield, is what they did. And then that Woodlands ordinance called for the developer, at the time was Selective Group, and they had to come in, and they had to inventory, do a forestry study, and for every tree they removed that was over, I think it was three inches in diameter, they had to, they had to leave a tree. So they had to, their site plan had to orchestrate on that, what they were going to keep and what they were going to leave. So, so I think, I think we should have something in place. I can't believe that our township doesn't have a Woodlands, some kind of a...
Novi has historically been very tough with tree replacements on there.
The commission has been tough?
Pardon?
You say that who?
Novi.
Oh, Novi has been tough, which is good. I think it's tough.
Right, and the, the other thing that should be considered in that is, especially in new construction, not only do you leave the tree, but the tree's got to last for a couple of years. We wound up, that same subdivision you talked about...
Timber Ridge?
Built the one here in Plymouth, and they ran those tractors so close to so many of the trees, that within two years, they're, they killed them.
Was that Woodlor?
Yeah.
Yeah, Woodlor, yeah.
So they just killed them, you know, so if you're going to have an ordinance in there, there ought to be some sustaining thing that doesn't allow them to say, yeah, we're going to leave that there, it's only...
Well, they have...
...away from this house, and we're going to ride a tractor across it and break all the...
Their ordinance actually makes you not flag them, but...
Oh, put the snow fences.
Yeah, yep, tree fences on everything that's being saved. That when you say, these trees are going to be saved, then there has to be a tree fence around them, and you can't take them down. You can't get close to them. Yep, so it's, it's something we should consider, and I don't know if it's our, if it's, if it's to the building department, or if it's our, our job to do this, but somebody should, the Board of Trustees needs to maybe look at...
But this Woodlands, Woodlands ordinance is a separate ordinance, not part of the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I'll bring it up. How would that process work? The planning commission would make a recommendation, right?
If it's part of the general code, typically, I think those ordinances have traditionally been prepared by the township attorney, and then are just solely adopted by a first and second reading of the board.
I'll bring it up on Tuesday.
Okay, I appreciate it. I think the community would appreciate it. I think most of the commissioners would appreciate it. Is anybody opposed to something like that?
No, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I think it's, I think it's something we should look, I, that's...
Some stupid going on here.
Yeah.
It should be something the trustees should consider.
Yeah.
I'll bring it up. Well, even I pointed out that General Home thing that was taken off the agenda, they, they wiped out all those trees on that thing. I assume that they, they did it legally, but...
Well, I don't know what's legally, you know, so if you...
Had the right permits to do that.
In Novi, you have to have a permit, and if you remove them without a permit, that's when this takes place, and they don't want to litigate, they hate to litigate, but at the same time, they're, like you said, they're pretty staunch about their Woodlands ordinance.
Well, then...
Is there a difference, being a city and a township?
There is, but I, I think if there were an ordinance, then it would be much more clear from the, from the planning, from the beginning. So, because I could imagine people would take down, may take down trees, you know, not, they're not doing it, you know, to try to get away with something, they just didn't know, because they didn't have the ord, you know, they didn't have the notice.
Well, what about the, the lady that came here, the realtor with Century 21? And she was, she was frustrated because she can't sell the corner of Ann Arbor Road and back.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that was a really nice site, and then they tore all the trees down. So there's no trees on the site now, and there's a...
Stumps.
A building to suit with stumps, which is even worse.
Oh, yeah.
Right? So if you're going to tear the tree down, get rid of the stumps at least, make it look like a nice lot, you know, so.
It was too expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the answer there.
Thank you.
Anything else from anybody?
Do we need to...
Is there a...
Receive and file on the monthly report?
Yeah.
I move we receive and file on the planning and zoning monthly report of March 2019.
Support?
Moved by Commissioner Pratt, supported by Commissioner Harv to receive and file the reports, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt, supported by Commissioner Barberina to adjourn at 9:12, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?